We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll let it go. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Just note that Councilmember Tuttle is also with us remotely. First page, we have three proclamations and then right now it looks like we have a full public agenda. On page two, you have one item of unfinished business. This would approve a letter of intent for the issuance of $5.7 million in IRVs for an office project at West 47th Street South. First new business item was received and filed a third quarter financial report. Next page, number two would approve the projects and budgets to be included in the 2026 Facilities Maintenance Program. Number three would approve funding for the 2026 Sidewalk Maintenance Program. Number four would approve the guaranteed maximum price for the design-build expansion of the Four Mile Creek digester. Number five would approve a licensing process for lodging establishments in the community. You have a pretty packed planning agenda. Number one would approve a conditional use permit in District Two. Difference in this case is between MIPC and the DAB recommendations.
And again, these cases do not get public comment, is that correct?
That's correct. Number two, actually, I do need to ask law and planning on the next one. This is an appeal of a recommendation of MIPC regarding a rezoning District Two, and I'm not sure if, are public comments allowed on an appeal or is it treated just like a normal rezoning?
Yes.
What about the petition? Petitioners not allowed to speak? Okay. Okay. All right. Next page, number three would approve a rezoning of District Three. There's a difference again between MIPC and DAB. Number four would approve a rezoning District Two, same thing in terms of difference in recommendations. And number five would approve a PUD amendment in District One. Once again, a difference between MIPC and the DAB.
Just for the public, that's the crown of town.
Thank you.
And again, public comment or no public comment?
No public comment, is my understanding of that. Next page, just down towards the bottom, four, B, and C. Those are two contracts with real estate consultants to help negotiate and acquire easements in property that is needed for three different improvement projects that we have. Next page, seven, A, would approve a purchase of the building at 332 North River View for the police department's traffic section. That's a building that police has occupied and now will be owning it.
We have left the Old Town Police Station office, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and they've moved into this facility. Next page, number 10 would approve funding for the development of master plans for the water and sewer utilities. Next page, number 13 would approve the city's annual investment policy. Nothing on the remainder of that page, nothing on the next page. The following page, item 23 would approve an adjustment to the city's boundaries to reflect annexations that occurred in 2025. And the last page, items 24 and 25 would approve the sale of two public housing homes. And number 26 would approve an amended budget for the modifications to the airport security Mayor, that's all I have for the sixth, and then we don't have a meeting until the end of the month, so we don't have a preview for it.
Thank you very much, and just a reminder, next week's council meeting is Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. That is due to elections being held on Tuesday, and so we're having our meeting on Thursday evening, and it's the last evening meeting of the year.
I'm not sure whether you want to take council comments, but we also do have the EOC activation discussion covered here at the end.
Councilmembers? No comments from councilmembers. Very nice. Happy Halloween.
Mike is coming.
Just want to encourage everybody to have a nice, safe Halloween tonight. It's one of my favorite, it is my favorite holiday, so love seeing the kids out there, and watch out for all the spooky people out there.
All right. Reminder of how crazy college it will be, I was talking to a property owner about 3,000 pieces of candy for tonight, so it will be pretty active. All right, with that, I'll turn over to Chief Snow.
With me today is Emergency Manager Julie Stimson and also Brian Ellis, who will lead us through a tornado scenario. Julie's going to do a really, really quick recap of the October 10th presentation in regards to EOC activations, and then Brian will lead everybody through the table talk exercise. So with that, I'll turn it over to them. I do have a sign-in sheet that they would like for you to sign if you're here, and I do also have some handouts if you forgot to bring yours, so you can follow along through the handouts, so.
Thank you, Chief Snow. Good morning.
Music, Eric Benz.
Perfect. All right. As you said, Julie Stimson, Cedric County Emergency Management Director, and Brian Ellis is with me. He is my operations manager, who actually oversees the emergency operations center a couple blocks down the street. So as we go through this scenario and we talk about EOC, Brian is going to be your main focal point if we do any kind of activation. So just kind of a quick recap, we talked last, last meeting about statutes and why we do what we do, what the different activation levels are, you know, we can go to monitor into full activation, kind of talked a little bit about what the roles and responsibilities for senior and elected officials are during a disaster. We're going to get out of the way, let our first responders do their first responder craft, and then we are going to be focusing on the community recovery piece of this. So we're going to really focus our scenario looking at that recovery piece, because it's a long time to recover, and there's a lot of things that have to happen, mostly behind the scene. We've talked about policies. Okay. So before we get into the scenario, I did want to communicate about a recent tornado, the April 29th, 2022 tornado that we saw did extensive damage in Butler County, did some damage to some houses in Cedric County. But it looked awful. It looked like, oh my gosh, where's FEMA? We've got massive destruction. We did not qualify for any federal dollars, and I want to make sure that is understood, because the way that community recovered was all local recovery. The funds that were raised, over $900,000, came from fifteen, over 1,500 donors. That is the money that was used to help people recover, to help businesses reopen, to help homes rebuild, or to help people relocate. So with our threshold, it is very difficult for us to have enough uninsured damage or damage to public infrastructure that qualifies us for federal government aid. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. That means we have the resources to help us recover, but I just want to make sure that that's understood. So although we had 200 homes and businesses damaged, the YMCA, of course, we all saw that that was severely damaged, that was an insured property, which is why that did not count towards our uninsured loss. So as we're going through this scenario, Brian's going to kind of walk us through that, what does this happen if we have some damage right here in downtown Wichita? And just questions, some things for you to think about. You may not have the answers today, and that's perfectly fine, that's what we're working towards, is to help answer those questions that you might have as we go through this scenario. So without further ado, I'll bring up Brian Ellis to kind of walk you through some things and talk about the EOC operation stuff.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. So we're just going to make this more or less a food for thought for you. So if you can imagine, we've had a tornado that has come in from typically the southwest part of the county, drops down in Wichita, and it affects several of your districts. So we've got several districts that are involved. We will go to a full EOC activation. So as Julie kind of alluded to, that means we're bringing in everybody. So we're bringing in all of our emergency response agencies, we're bringing in hospitals, we're bringing in Public Works, GIS, we're bringing in all of our mass care partners, American Red Cross, United Way, Salvation Army, Calm Care is coming in, and then we will also have our strategic communications folks, PIO, folks that'll be coming in. And then, of course, as we go through, we all know you all are going to want to know what's going on, because you can't be everywhere knowing everything. So the thing that we want to look at is a couple things for you to think about, and this is the part of where if you want to know more, it's up to you to ask. If not, these are just thought-provoking questions for you. So if you're like, oh, I can't really answer that, I need to look into finding that out. That's where you can reach out to Chief Snow with questions. We don't even have to know who's asking, you can reach out directly to us. So the first question would be, do you receive our civic ready notifications? Are you signed up in the system to where either you're getting activations from emergency management when we do it? Are you getting it from when maybe Fire does their activations, or EMS has the ability to do their activations? So if you're not, that's something that we would want to encourage, because then that would let you know, hey, something big is going on if the EOC is activating to a level one activation. Also, something, yes?
Brian, can I talk to my home?
Have all of the council members, city managers, and the assistant city managers set up on civic ready, so if I get notified of something that's a major disaster that you need to be aware of, I'll immediately send that out to you. So just FYI.
Okay. Very good. So you as council members, the mayor, city manager, how do you get notified that something has occurred in your district? If you, if Chief Snow and her department is busy dealing with it, and maybe it's a while before she's able to get that alert sent out, or get ahold of us and say, hey, can you send the alert on our behalf? How do you get notified? Are you getting calls from your citizens? Are you getting calls from each other, because maybe it didn't affect your district, and you're saying, hey, just FYI, I just got a call from my aunt or my cousin that lives in your district, and they said a tornado just went through, are you aware of it? How do you get notified? And then something we're going to kind of tag-team here at the end, what are your roles and responsibilities as elected officials when this happens? Now, in your information, at the beginning, we had several slides that talked about, here's what the state statutes are, things like this, but where does your role come in? And some of those things to think about, we automatically know that at some point somebody needs to probably enact some of your emergency procedures, which may be deviating from normal spending habits. Instead of having to get three quotes and all of that, you may just be able to have a department head go out and purchase that with a P-card. And depending on the nature, does that P-card have a high enough credit limit on it, or does somebody need to go in from your finance and maybe increase that? So, and then also, how are you finding out what goes on in the EOC? Now, we'll be the first to tell you, and it's, it's nothing against you and your position, we really don't want the electeds down in the EOC. I know you'll want to come and say, well, but we want to know firsthand. We've got a place for you to go, we have a conference room, and we can bring up a TV, and we can bring up what you need to know. But what happens is, we hope that you're going to be focused on the whole city, where the EOC is typically going to be focused on the disaster response. So where we're going with this is, right now, we're at the point, we'll simulate with this exercise, all of our emergency services have already been activated, fire department's been out doing search and rescues, law enforcement's been out, they've shut down streets, helped, Public Works has put up barricades, EMS has been treating patients and transporting. So we're at that point where now, and the thing to remember is, with us, if you think about it, you're one person over your district, so to speak, and if this tornado comes through and causes a lot of damage, do you think everything's going to be done in two hours? Six hours? 12 hours? Probably not. This is a multi-day response. So from our standpoint, looking at from emergency management and our responders, we go into what we call operational periods. And we will be taking our staff, the fire department will need to take their staff, and we'll go splitting people. You're by yourself, so to speak, so are you going to be able to stay up for 24, 36, 48 hours, because you want to know what's going on? So that's something to think about, too, is how will you interact to get that information? If it, you know, now maybe if you've got partnering jurisdictions or districts, you may say, hey, I've got to get a few hours of sleep. I'm going to tell everybody, if they need you, you tell them to call me for the next six hours, and I'll cover your district, so to speak, and things like that. So during that phase, we're going to assume that we went through, we've maybe been working two or three days. Now, everything's starting to quiet down from the emergency response. So the fire department is kind of going back to normal operations, EMS, Public Works may still have some things that they're doing, we know that Utilities is going to be out, but now it's kind of quieted down, so to speak. So the next thing that we're going to have to look at is, after that's done, the destruction's still going to be there, we're going to be doing cleanup, but now we're going to need to move into the recovery phase. So Julie's going to take it from here and kind of talk about some more of those things, your roles and responsibilities, that you'll need to be thinking about from a recovery standpoint.
So before I go into that, is there any questions for Brian about kind of what we're doing with our scenario? Okay, fantastic. I'm going to talk a little bit again about the 2022 tornado, because it really explains how recovery works. There's what we call short-term recovery and long-term recovery. Short-term recovery is getting essential lifelines back to folks, that they have a safe place to be, their kids are going back to school, hopefully they're going back to work. But long-term recovery is those permanent things, of getting businesses to reopen, getting somewhat back to a normal sense of operations. The long-term recovery for the 2022 tornado, the tornado happened on April 29th, 2022, we had a long-term recovery committee, and this is kind of best practice, it's going into our recovery plans that we have at the county, that was a multidisciplinary team. Like I mentioned, we did not have government resources coming in, it was our own resources, our donor resources to manage. So this long-term recovery committee was multidisciplinary, we had elected officials from all three jurisdictions that were impacted, so Cedric County, City of Andover, and Butler County. We had faith-based organizations, we had local church, we had a local bank, local insurance company, and a couple of the private businesses. Together, we managed the cases, or I shouldn't say managed, the United Way took the fiscal responsibility to manage the donor funds, that's what they do, that's what they're good at, and they would bring to us what the needs were of the community, what were the unmet needs, what was insurance not covering, who were uninsured who needed assistance. And we did this anonymously, they would not tell us information about who they were, they would just tell us the situation. We have a family of four, lost their house, lost their vehicle. Didn't have names, we didn't have addresses, because we wanted to keep that very subjective and very objective. But it took almost three years to get through that workload to get people back on their feet, and there's still some unmet needs out there, especially with insurance costs and the cost to rebuild. So almost three years, that we had this committee coming together to manage cases, to make sure we were getting resources to people who needed to get back on their feet. So I bring that to you, because that is a long-term recovery, and the cameras are gone, people don't think about it. I like to call recovery as the forgotten phase of disasters, but when you have a community in need and needs resources to get back on their feet, that's where this group comes in. This is where we make sure that we're giving them what we can to get back on their feet. Some examples may be, you know, maybe we extend due dates on bills, maybe we waive some building permit fees, or, you know, overtime hours may get relaxed during response and recovery. That's the policy decisions that have to come from the elected bodies and senior officials. That's nothing Chief Snow, Chief Sullivan, or myself make that, make that call. So that's why we're out here having this discussion, is to kind of give that thought process going, of how prepared do you feel to be able to take on that role if something like this were to happen here in Wichita? Like I mentioned, it's a long-term process, almost three years. I don't really have the donors. We were very fortunate in the tornado, where we did not have a lot of uninsured losses. We had some, but it wasn't enough to meet the thresholds. Now, right now, a lot of discussion is, or maybe raising the thresholds even higher, or it's going to be even more challenging to qualify, to even apply for federal assistance. And I bring that to you, because we hearing it all over, local response, local recovery. So we want to make sure our local jurisdictions and local electeds and local senior officials are ready to take on that charge if something happens. So that's the goal of this discussion, and I know we're kind of doing this kind of piecemeal. Ideally, I would love to maybe have 30 minutes, maybe at a joint government meeting, to actually go through a full presentation on recovery and what does recovery all entail. There's a lot to it, but I won't be able to get into the details today. So anything, did you have any question?
Yeah. How confident are you in the short-term recovery? What do you think the capacity is as far as individuals affected by a disaster that we could handle efficiently at this time?
Short-term recovery, I'm fairly comfortable with. Between, now, it is circumstantial. Now, if something bad were to happen, and we've got our hotels full because we've got a big event, that looks a lot different than our normal day-to-day. So assuming we don't have an NCAA tournament, you know, we've got our hotels, but our voets, our volunteer organizations, very well to do temporary sheltering, we're very prepared, a lot of memorandums and a lot of agreements with local churches and schools for that temporary sheltering. But like long-term housing, I am concerned, we've got housing challenges as it is now, and you throw on, you know, potentially a few hundred people, even up to 1,000 people, now they don't have a place to stay, it's going to be a challenge to manage, and we'll have to be creative, and we'll have to work with partners to make that happen.
Thank you.
You just mentioned temporary sheltering. When you say temporary, what's temporary? Can you give an amount of days or weeks?
I want to say weeks. Again, it's circumstantial. Ideally, if we use local hotels, it is up to kind of the memorandums that are between, like the Red Cross, Salvation Army, and United Way, based on what the agreements are with the local churches, schools, and hotels. So I don't have a concrete black and white answer on a set deadline. It also depends on the needs of the community. Things can always be extended in times of disaster.
Something to think about, too, if, you know, you would think, okay, this affects, you know, think of maybe an area in one of your districts, and you may say, oh, well, I know that approximately 2,000 people live in this area that was affected, so we're going to have to find shelters that will handle 2,000 people. To tell you the truth, and by volunteering with Red Cross, I know, you're lucky if you will get 10% of that population that will actually go to a shelter, because most of them, not necessarily the stigmatism of a shelter or having to sleep on a cot, most of them are going to go where? They've got family, or they've got friends that are maybe outside of the area, that they can actually go stay with, because then they know they've got meals, they've got a shower, they're around people they know. So a lot of times, when we think of that, that's why in short-term, we say we can usually handle fairly easy, because we can use schools, churches, and then, too, part of that is, where we really have to work is, okay, right now, we know schools are in session. So if a tornado happens on Friday night, yeah, the school may say, oh, yeah, you can use my gymnasium over the weekend, but guess what? We've got a basketball tournament on Monday, we need the gym back. Same way with churches, you know, yeah, we can let you have it during the week, but we've got services. So we run into some of those things, but short-term, yeah, we're good with that, it's the long-term finding, you know, because you figure if you have two to four, two to 300 houses that are destroyed, where are those people going to go? Do we have enough openings in apartment complexes and housing and, you know, things like that? And that's where one of our, our next challenges is starting to get together with our chambers of commerce, because they're going to know the people to reach out to, and then work with our realtors, you know, to get those contacts, where we can reach out and say, what do you have? And they go, oh, well, we've got 20 properties listed, we could probably work on that.
If I can, there's two things I want to talk about. First of all, when we had the tornado that hit southeast Wichita, and what is it, Oklaun?
Yeah. Oklaun, Fenner Mobile Home Bar.
So that, that was a great example of how quickly people responded. I remember there was a school that, no, I think it was a church, was it a school or church?
School, right.
It was identified, and then Red Cross, and I think, I can't remember who else was there, they rolled up trailers pretty quickly and were able to serve food. I don't know if a lot of people actually took shelter, but they did take some of that assistance. And so I think the mechanism is in place, and they mobilized pretty quickly. The other thing I wanted to ask, if we could take a few minutes, can we go through the EOC, who's in the EOC in terms of city staff, and then can we talk about the room that's set aside for the elected officials? And then I think it'd be good to review again with the kinds of decisions that the council would be asked to make during those, that early time of response, and then even as we get into recovery. And then the role expected for the mayor as a spokesperson for what's happening and informing the community. So if we could go through all that, I think that way everybody in this room would have a better understanding of how that works.
I'll let Brian kind of go over the EOC setup, and then I'll talk more kind of about the mayor and some of the roles.
So in your, in your packet, it's the back page. Okay. In your packet, you would have received, this is our map, we have 21 workstations in our EOC, and if you look at it, our back row is typically our, what we call our first response partners. So in that, we have Wichita Police Department and Wichita Fire are stationed back there. And I want to let you know, too, you'll notice all the yellow, the highlighted areas where Wichita is included, each one of those stations actually has a City of Wichita computer there. So anybody from the City of Wichita would be able to log in to the Wichita network, get to their drives, get to their files, whatever. So that was done by design. Then our second row is kind of our support, so we've got hospitals, we've got transit, so we could pull in Wichita Transit, we've also got USD 259 that we can pull in. And then the utilities, we have a city computer there. Typically, that's where we're going to hope that, like, energy, Kansas Gas Service may come in, but realistically, they've told us we're probably not going to come to the EOC. If you need information, call us, and we can tell you, give you an update, but they're going to be working out of their own EOC, so to speak. And then Wichita Public Works and Utilities has the other station there. And then in our Public Information Office, Wichita Strategic Cons has a desk there that also has a computer. Now, that does not mean that, especially when you look at our first row, like I said, of our mass care partners, as you'll notice, the desk that says Finance, typically, that's our Cedric County Finance. So how do we incorporate with the City of Wichita Finance? Typically, they have not come to our office or come to the EOC, whether that's by design or just maybe they didn't think they have been invited. I would strongly encourage on this one, there's probably going to be a lot of things, challenges, you know, overtime, purchasing, it might not be a bad idea if somebody from Wichita purchasing did come and sit at that desk. And we have other computers in there to where, even if Cedric County Finance was sitting there, if, say, you know, 259 didn't show up, or Transit wasn't needed, per se, they could sit at that desk and be able to log in. And every one of those desks has a generic login. So even if, you know, Mayor Wu came and sat down at any one of the desks, the Salvation Army desk, she- Army desk, she could log in using a generic login and she could get to the internet. So if she needed to get, if she could get to, you know, resources, you would still have that access.
Other question. So I know it says transit, but immediately I started thinking, we have rec centers and oftentimes they're located all around our community. So really, that could be, instead of saying transit, I say it's the City of Wichita Department, COW Department.
Right.
Just because, I don't know, has that been activated before where we open up, for instance, a rec center if for emergency reasons, we just need a big gym?
Yeah, we've had the opportunity to do that, but I don't think we have in the time I've been here, I don't think we've used any of those types of facilities normally recovered.
I want to clarify what we're talking about with transit is transportation or bus services.
Right.
The rec centers, that is all worked through the front row with American Red Cross, United Way, Salvation Army. They're going to be contacting rec centers, senior centers, churches, all of those areas that can be used for sheltering, warming centers, cooling centers, whatever the needs are to have people go to a safe place. So they're represented through those three organizations that already have that relationship.
I don't want to complicate this too much, but this is a centralized coordinated response for the county, which includes our city. And this is a great place to be, but there's also, I think, a desire at times to be on the scene or close to the scene. And Chief, you want to talk about how you would set up your operations and then what the council's role could be if they do go to the scene. Here, we're going to need you for decision-making. That's why getting to EOC is important. But I know that you're also probably, I'm going to use the example of the airplane crash at Eisenhower. And at that time, we had council members, the mayor, that wanted to be there. In fact, the mayor and the fire chief were not just local spokesperson, but they had national press conference and they were making comments. And so maybe we talk about the role of on-scene presence versus here and how we provide guidance on where we need the mayor and council.
So if we go back to the airplane crash, one of the things that we did, well, first of all, we have the field comm unit. The field comm unit, what it's been designed for is that's where the command staff will be. We'll set up a unified command there. And then once we get on scene and we find an area in which we can secure, like for example, in the plane crash, we found an open hangar. And we set that up for elected officials, for the media, and it was an opportunity, you could, it was an opportunity for constant communication between the field comm unit on what was going on in the field and you, so that you could stay abreast of whatever was going on and help make decisions that you needed to make at that particular time. And we would do exactly the same thing. The issue is you've got to give us a little bit of time because we have to figure out what's been affected, where the damage area is, and let us find a spot for you. So initially, what should happen is if you want to be right in the mix of things, you need to go to the EOC where they provided a spot for you. Stay there and then as soon as we can get you on, because I truly understand, you know, wanting to know, as soon as I can get you into the assessment, I mean, to the scene that I can, I'll bring you in there and we'll set up a place for you. And then we have the media there, we continue to, we do, like Brian said, we set up operational periods and they're normally set up at 12-hour operational periods, but we can give you constant updates. We can give you an update every 30 minutes, we can give you an update every hour. As things change, we will continually keep you in the loop. Very vital to us because I can't make those decisions. A lot of things that happen there is on your folks' level.
And at the EOC, we also set up that Joint Information System or the Joint Information Center where we are planning media releases and we're planning those locations. So the City of Wichita, the county are coming together. If we have a PIO from the fire department, if we have a PIO from the hospitals, that we're all working together at one location, communicating the similar messages. And like Chief Snow, we're going to get you out to the disaster scene once they tell us it's safe and we have secured routes. I know during the tornado, myself and my deputy director at the time, we escorted our commissioners through. So we fully understand, we want to get you out there once we know the scene is safe and that give you time to talk to your constituents, of course.
Yeah, that initial, I would even say, and I know it sounds like a long time, but that initial two, maybe three hours, our mercy crews are going to be scrambling. They're not going to be really thinking about, okay, where's this? So the thing I would encourage you is your strategic comms people should be part of our Joint Information System. They have access to our logging system in the EOC. So they can see everything that's being posted from our mercy responders. And their task is really watching that log and that's where they're building a lot of their public releases to put out. And they're talking to all of those partners. So if it involved, we know that we had, you know, heaven forbid, it was a tornado that happened during the day and hit a school, they're going to be reaching out to the school district and say, is there any bullet points that we need to add to this? So they're going to be coordinating that. So you as elected, that is probably going to be your best mode of information in that first three hours is working with your strategic comms. And that's where you can actually fire that information back and say, I'm getting a report of XYZ. Can you confirm or deny that? They're going to be the ones to do that because even within the EOC, those 21 desks, they may not even have that information, but our PIO folks are going to be gleaning it from everywhere.
And one thing is, they can go out to the scene too. So even though we're saying that the EOC is a Joint Information Center, we fully recognize that media is going to rush out to the scene. They want the shots, they want to talk to folks. So that, again, is a quick coordination in the EOC that says, okay, Wichita Communications are going to go out here, we're going to meet the media on, you know, Third and Broadway. So just because we're saying that joint information is coming from the EOC, we fully expect to dispatch or deploy our public information officers, especially those initial hours to keep the media at bay. And that would be certainly something if the mayor elected officials want to be together and have that joint messaging, that could certainly come from that EOC coordination.
I'll add to what Brian said, when you talk about the Oakland tornado, it was a good two hours before we actually knew what we were dealing with. And, you know, we have all this technology and you invest a lot of money in it and it's great, but drones, at the time, we had drones, we had a drone, you can't put a drone up in the wind. There's certain flying things. So you know how we got our information? You know, I have crews booting on the street, to be very honest with you, but they're looking at what's there in front of them. They can't see the big picture. And if you want to know how we actually found out what kind of damage we actually had was energy, energy is really good on where the power's out. And that's what told us how big our damage actually was. So we use a lot of different resources to gather the information and it takes us a little bit of time to get that.
And I do want to assure you guys, we do a lot of training and exercise with our partners. This is all the stuff that keeps us busy behind the scene when we're not responding to disasters, is doing training and exercises with our partners, setting up shelters and setting up processes, doing EOC drills, that kind of stuff. So we certainly invite you to, as our calendar is allowed, to join us through some of those exercises. We'll do some communication, especially with our full-scale exercises. The airport should do a full-scale this year, they do it every three years. So that gives you an opportunity to really, truly see all of the phases. One thing I want to talk about with recovery, we talk about finance and administration. Part of the recovery piece, you have to start documenting cost and hours right away. If you don't do that, you're creating a nightmare down the road to backpedal to recover those costs that is going to go into that disaster response and recovery. So again, that's something, even though our firefighters or law enforcement EMS are doing life safety measures, right off the bat, we need administration to start thinking about how are we tracking the cost, the time, the overtime, all of that stuff. And that's where we come in with policies and city policies and county policies. So that's the focus almost from the beginning. And of course, we're going to care about our constituents, we're going to get you out there, but even before that happens is what are we doing to start documenting this stuff?
On the issue of drones, do we have something worked out where, because we have some no-fly zones around the city, close to the airports and close to McConnell. So if there is a disaster in that area and we do need to get drones up in the air, is there some sort of agreement to where we can do that in those no-fly zones?
Yes, and we can also establish no-fly zones as well, that we can have drones, but no other, no private drones and that type of thing. We got a lot of drone capabilities. I want to say it's almost a challenge right now for us to get a feel of how many agencies have drones and how do we work together and how do we kind of manage that? But yeah, we certainly have through the drone piloting process and FAA and all of that, they've got things worked out for that.
Okay, thank you.
And the thing to think about too is.
And our Civil Air Patrol. Our Civil Air Patrol is a huge asset here and a resource and we're doing a lot more training and things with them, but they have a very good drone and that's part of their mission is damage assessments, getting up in the air as soon as they can to give us some of that feel.
And even though we kind of probably alluded that if a tornado happened in Wichita, it's going to be on Wichita to deal with it. That's not necessarily true. Like I said, we're going to have county resources that are going to be part of that. And as Chief Snow can attest to, if we get to the point to where we are taxing our resources, and the thing to remember is a lot of people think we've taxed our resources when we have no more fire trucks, no more EMS units, no more police cars available. That is the wrong time to think that you've outdone your resources. Our mercy responders are going to be thinking ahead of time because that tornado occurred here, but guess what? There's still fires occurring, there's still EMS calls occurring, things of that nature. So when we say that you've taxed your resources, we are actually saying they have no more resources to be able to put towards that event without running other essential services short. And at that point, that's where we reach out to the state of Kansas through KDEM and we can make resource requests and we can start getting resources from outside of the county that will come in. And they can either come in as part of the response or they could even come in and sit, we could have a fire truck from Garden City come and be setting in a City of Wichita station with a city firefighter and they could run calls. They all fight the fire the same, they just need to know where to go. So there's a lot of resources, so it's not you by yourself.
Yeah, that's the power, excuse me, that's the power of the EOC and the coordinated response. We did that with Andover. EOC let us know that they needed somehow, conveyed that to the chief and we were able to provide equipment and people to hand over. Those resources would be available should we get hit and the suburbs didn't.
When was the last time we've had full activations at the EOC? Would those have been, I know Andover tornado was really more Butler County, but would then the next one be the plane crash at ICT and then Oakland tornado?
We did, the plane crash, we did a partial activation. So that was such a unique situation because we did not have a response, we had an immediate recovery. So we brought in, as soon as we started realizing what the needs of the community were, it was more the mental health resources and the comfort care. So those are the ones that we brought in to the EOC was anybody who maybe had a close relationship with the folks that may have been on that plane. We brought in like the chambers of commerce to find out what businesses may have a hard hit. But we did not bring in all of the firefighters, the police, or EMS because there was no first response needed.
Sorry, I think I was talking about the plane crash at.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I was thinking 5342, that's been on my brain, yes. So we actually have an EOC, they have an EOC at the airport. We will have one of our representative, one of our department staff going there, but if we have an accident, we will fully activate. We only have done that during exercises, thankfully. We have not had a, I don't know about the incident that we had with the flight safety building, I was not here for that. I don't believe we activated for that situation. I think it was managed.
Yeah, the most recent ones would have been the tornado and then the next recent one, which wasn't a full activation, was May of last year when we were supposed to have tornado getting. And we only did a partial activation. We called in all of our emergency response agencies and everybody else was optional. If it would have kicked up and we would have started seeing the tornadoes, then we would have went to full activation. But fortunately, everything fizzled out and we were able to send our partners home. So those have really been the only ones. So the tornado, yeah, was the last one that was a full activation.
Andover?
Yeah.
The 2022 tornado, we did for COVID. That was just as I was getting here, so there was activations, full activations early on when this was kicking off and then we kind of put them down. But yes, a plane crash, that would happen here. And the reason we don't say we're going to have all of our operations out of our EOC is because FAA and the airlines is really responsible for managing that airline accident. So we don't want them leaving the scene to come to our EOC. We're going to go to their EOC and when they need our local resources, we will coordinate out of our EOC. So we're kind of operating out of two different centers, but still working together in collaboration, if that makes sense. We also want to make sure that we are not pulling resources to come to this building. If we can go out there and still coordinate resources and keep them there where they're needed more, we're going to certainly do that. But again, something that just kind of happens downtown, we're right here down the street.
How do you coordinate with ARdic then, the Real-Time Information Center? And then how will you coordinate with the new fire emergency communications down in District Three?
Well, first of all, the dock center is just our internal operations. It's the one that's going to be down in District Three. That's just internal. It doesn't, it's for us to set it. When I said that we set up, you know, by command, so like the plane incident would be in the, where it hit the fire, the flight safety building, we would have, you know, we have command there at the actual incident, that's what we refer to as our operational section. But we have all the other parts of that that need to be taken care of. We have to have our planning section, our logistics section, our finance section, they talk about that. That and the dock center, which is what we refer to, it's not an EOC, it's just for internal operations. We would be coordinating all that, getting those things ready. We would send that information to the command center, the command center to keep coming back. It's just a way for us logistically to keep ourselves organized and get the resources that we need, address priorities as far as response priorities and so forth.
And a lot of your departments will do that internally. I know the police department, they will set up their own kind of command center too. But all they're doing is taking the information that they're getting from the command post, if they're saying, hey, these are areas that we need to send officers because we're starting to get reports of looting or something, then they kind of do the logistical piece saying, okay, we'll take these officers from here and move them to here. Public Works is another one, that they will establish their own kind of command center. Now, they don't run the scene, all they're doing is gathering information from that unified command, which hopefully, they're giving us information in the EOC and we're providing information back to them. Like if they're saying, we need 20 dump trucks from wherever, we're calling, getting those and saying, yep, you're getting 20 dump trucks, we've got five coming from Butler County, four coming from Keenman, whatever. So that's how that would play. So it's, each department may have their own kind of command center that they're doing the, moving the pieces and parts, so to speak, but that all ties into the unified command.
Do you guys have an idea of the resources available to each department ahead of time or is it more when you're in the situation, how many dump trucks does everybody have available, for example?
We are relying on those departments to tell us. So like Public Works, I'm not going to know how many Public Works, how many dump trucks. I'm going to be reaching out and say, how many dump trucks? So if we're here and we need 50 dump trucks and I reach out to use Public Works and you say, we only have 20, then that tells us in the EOC, we got to find 30 from someplace else. So we don't have the capability to be able to keep all the resources. We just know, you tell us what you have, what you need, and then we fill that gap for you.
But part of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So council member, whole house, so a prime example for us, one of the things that we do is, Blackley has always been an issue for us with the rain. So we know that we need barricades when it's predicted a lot of rain, then we're going to be proactive, you know, we pay attention to weather, we're going to be proactive, we're going to get barricades. Well, I've got two resources, I can go to Public Works and I don't know what they've got going on because they use, you know, barricades to, you know, throughout the city. And my second resource then is parks and recreation, they've got barricades. So internally, what I'm doing is I'm gathering that information. If neither one of those can give me what I need to block off Blackley, then I call the EOC and I ask the EOC, hey, I need barricades. And they may be able to go get them.
We can get them from Public Works or we may reach out to a private contractor, private control systems and say, we need to rent or will you provide or do we just do it? And that's where too, in the EOC, we have a mercy vendor book. And a lot of contracts have been already set, so we're not getting that, oh, yeah, we'll come out and help you. And their normal rate to you as a citizen may be $80 an hour, but they say, oh, this is an emergency, we can charge 160 an hour. No, we've got a lot of established contracts to where even if they come out, we're only getting charged this much.
I will share this emphasizes the importance of training and exercises though. Although we don't have like a hard black and white count of capabilities, when we're exercising and training with our partners, we are determining what our capabilities, what our gaps and shortfalls are. So it shouldn't ever be a total complete surprise that we don't have enough dump trucks or enough barricades. We should already kind of have an idea that if we get to this level, we already know we're going to have to start making some phone calls. So again, it's that emphasis of that partnership and just training and exercise. So again, it's that emphasis of, of that partnership and just training and exercising, using our resources and identifying those gaps ahead of time.
I wanted to be mindful, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead.
I was going to say, I want to be mindful of everybody's time, I just want to make sure that we wrap up and that we address any immediate questions.
Yeah, just one along that route, did we get that detailed in our exercises or our drills?
I'll give you a sneak preview. Probably February, March of next year, we are going to be doing a full EOC activation exercise. And one of the components that I may ask Chief Snow to close her ears, is going to be resourcing. So if we have an event and, you know, a lot of times we play and we think, oh, we've got all the fire trucks, all the ambulances we need, we're actually going to be tasking each of the agencies to where if they say, oh yeah, we dispatched five fire trucks, okay, we take five fire trucks out of play and then something else comes in and we take, and pretty soon, they're going to get to the point to where hopefully they've been tracking, we're out of that. So we're going to be doing some resource, resource management as part of it. And if you would like to come and observe, we can definitely include you on that list where you could come see, but it's going to be a, a full EOC activation where we'll have all, hopefully all 21 desks filled with somebody. And I'll reemphasize, I think that you'd asked earlier or somebody asked, well, what if Parks Department is really heavily involved with this? I don't see where they can sit in here. If we need to bring somebody in, we'll ignore the desk, we can bring them in and they sit in an empty desk. We've got extra computers we can bring out. Or if they bring their own computer, we'll, we've got a conference table, we will make room if we need to pull an agency in that is not a normal agency.
And then just to kind of wrap things up, this, this is meant to kind of get that appetite going up to ask these questions. We'll certainly come back as many times as we need to to continue these discussions. Again, inviting you guys out to training and exercises. The biggest ask I have is really encourage your department heads to participate in these training and exercises so we can identify our capabilities and shortfalls. And then anything we can do to help you prepare to make those policy decisions, what have we seen in other disasters? I'm one of those lessons learned kind of persons, anytime anything happens massively across the country, I'll get after action reports and I'll pull in lessons learned to make us more prepared. So that's our job is to help you prepare for those, those bad days we hope never happen. So yeah, I, I don't know when we'll come out back, but we'll come out as many times as we're invited to. I would like to do like a joint government, you know, 30, 45 minute discussion presentation about recovery because again, that's that long process, there's decisions and policies that need to be considered in that process.
There's discussion in 2026, so maybe after, if they get an opportunity to present it and en banc, then after that to do some short, like after city council agendas, maybe, you know, twice a year or four times a year, come out and just open up discussions for, you know, what questions do you have? How can we, you know, better enhance the, the community and, and your cognitive skills and so forth? So that's what we'd like to do moving forward.
My challenge to you is, okay, when the response is over, AMR and recoveries, who is the person or persons that we are coordinating with? How are we managing our recovery? It's not going to be Chief Snow or Chief Sullivan because they're the first response, but who is going to help us lead that recovery process? And that's kind of my challenge into thinking of what department or what agency or what persons would that be?
And if you get questions, I know Julia's attended several of your breakfasts in some of the districts and things like that. If you get questions that are being asked, you know, words, like if we had this, how would you guys react or how would you, and you're like, I really don't know, reach out to us and let's, let's open up that discussion and maybe that's something we hadn't thought of as an issue, but we need to talk about it. And then we can try to come up with an answer to where you'd be able to get back to your citizen or constituents and say, here's what we've got planned or this is what's in the works. So you mentioned drones, we're getting ready to have a drone meeting with all of the agencies that have drones so that we can coordinate those efforts. So a lot of things going behind the scenes, just ask us.
I do want to thank those who have invited me out to those community breakfasts, it's gone very well and I've been requested to come out for other groups, definitely encourage that. We love talking to folks, we're doing senior centers, we're going to be talking with some rec centers and just how do we get our people prepared? Our community recovery is really based on how prepared our people are as a community. So that's what we're here for.
Chief, Julie, Brian, thank you so much.
And thank you for letting us go a little long-winded today, appreciate your time.
Appreciate you.
So Bob, I had a quick, I guess, legal question. So in an emergency situation, if a majority of the council is there and official actions or decisions are being made, is a special meeting called or is it retroactive approval at the next council meeting? Yeah, great question. I don't see Jennifer here. I believe there are some exceptions for emergencies and the worst case scenario would be you make a decision that you would then verify or ratify later. Or that we would be, depending on where we are, the EOC press probably wouldn't be involved, wouldn't be allowed, but we could maybe even find a location if we had to. You could be back here if, but most of the time, what I would expect is you would be making some decisions at the EOC and then we would bring it back and ratify it.
Good question. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Halloween.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a year seven question, right? Seven years and above?
Yeah.
Has that ever happened? Is, so that was a viable question, because that is not.
I meant to ask it when we were there, but I was like, it was so much.